Call this ring with meaning to order. Call roll.
Mayor Querom.
Here.
Councilmember Swanson.
Here.
Mavry.
Here.
Gomez.
Here.
Newman.
Here. Please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance. Start out tonight with a public comment. Just need your name up and flip that on. You know, you know the drill.
I need my name up.
I think it wasn't. I'm Bob Warren. I see on your agenda tonight you're going to be discussing three-way stop signs at South Main. I would also like you to discuss a stop sign at Fletcher and Zearing. Have this stop on the north end of Fletcher, I believe it is, where it crosses Zearing. That also intersects Cletea Court. There's a lot of elderly people driving out there and apparently there's no stop signs either direction there.
Is this in? You go down Euclid towards Zearing, right? Talking about, okay, if you go down Euclid.
Yeah, you turn on, turn on right on Zearing as you're going into Cletea Court. Left is Fletcher.
Right.
That intersection right there.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Just need your name, Bill.
My name is Bill. I'm not sure if this is the time to bring this up at this point. Are you folks going to discuss the parking doing away with a couple of parking spots up comments tonight? Is that, is that, if there's going to be an opportunity to talk about that later, is this the time? Yes.
You can do it now.
Okay. Perhaps I should have been more involved with this along the way, but it was brought to my attention a couple of weeks ago that that was going to go on, that you guys were looking at that. I assume that there's, the reason for that is a public, they're a safety situation. Is that safe to say?
It's a safety coming out of the property building, the alley between the thing coming out on the main street because you have to pull pretty far out to see around traffic for the parked cars. And then the other part is the congestion in the bottleneck that we have that develops when you're going north on Main Street as you're approaching the stoplight. And when you have these four vehicles that are parked up here, it's just reduced to one lane and cars cannot get into the left turn lane. We've got a lot more traffic in town, or the left turn lane. And we have a lot more traffic in town, so the congestion there. I was there on Friday, I think at 11:50, I was stopped there back at the north end, or the south end of the Proudey Building, so.
Yeah, I think the congestion thing was exactly what I was, the reason I was asking about this, because with the congestion comes additional parking needs. And as we all know, there's more storefronts full today than there has been in years. So I guess I'm concerned about, along with the additional storefronts and the additional folks that you just mentioned are probably put down Main Street, they need a place to park. So, you know, that being a safety concern, it's been that way for my whole life. And I'm 29 right now, so. Anyway, so I just, I wanted to speak my piece. I just, I just, I know in a lot of communities, you know, Geneseo is one that I'm at regularly. My sister lives in Naperville, so I get there regularly. And it's, and it's, it seems as though those folks, as a community, as the property becomes available behind, behind Main Street, if you will, they acquire some property and, and create parking. Once that property's acquired and something else is done with it, that opportunity's lost. I know we have created some parking, we had some parking here up and down Main Street in the last several years, and I think that's, the one up in North Main is kicking butt and taking names, it's full, full all the time, so I don't know where the folks parked before, but I think the same thing needs to go on. I understand that the house that was torn down, that might be an opportunity. I also understand that the gentleman's asking quite a bit for that situation, so I don't know where that stands, but that would be, it'd be terrific if we could, if we could land that and have some additional parking there. Besides the safety situation, we're going to lose, what are we, we're going to lose four spots, and then I understand there's the parking spots in front of Proudey are going to be turned from, to parallel parking, is that correct?
Four spots and two spots.
So we'll lose six spots. Now.
Definitely not lost, but we're, we're restriping the lot behind the Proudey Building. Those are straight in at this point, and along that north curve behind Kramer's is parallel. We're making everything diagonal, and we'll be able to add significantly more parking spaces behind the Proudey. And we were looking at that today, we're up there with Chamblin looking at how it's going to be restripped. And we'll be able to have significantly more parking back there than what we're taking off of Main Street. So it's, you know, there's some trade-off here and there, but we are, that lot will be restrained.
Yeah, I think that that makes sense for folks that know that that parking's back there, but for folks that, folks that don't, it's, you know, we all of us park down at the card shop down there, Brandy's Card Shop, and go to Pizza Cellar to get our pizzas, so it's, it is a challenge. The parking in that, in the town is really tough. So I guess I just am concerned, like I said, about giving those spots up. It is, it is a bear pulling out of the Proudey lot, as you mentioned, trying to turn north. That is a bear. We've, we've been dealing with it this whole time, I just, I'm not sure it makes good sense to give up those six spots. Another thing about the lot behind Proudey, most of those spots are taken up by a couple of groups, and those spots are filled up, a lot of them are filled up on a day-in, day-out basis by people that aren't visitors or people that aren't shopping Main Street. And I think everybody knows who those folks are, so I don't, we're going to gain some spots up there, but it just seems like the same folks park there whether they should be or whether they need to or not. So, anyway, I guess I'll, as the discussion goes on a bit, if I have anything else to add, I guess I'll do so at the time, but.
Appreciate that, Bill. Yeah, and just a couple more things, just, the, you know, what we're doing up here, you know, when you look at the north end, at the Ox Hotel, you look at Flower House, you know, look at Dough Milk Mustache, you know, those businesses went in there and they've never had parking out front. And, you know, people will find their parking. You know, they're not going to not shop Princeton because they don't find a parking spot on, you know, near where they want to shop or whatever. They will find their, they will find their parking. And so I'm not too concerned. I do know also, from what I've been told, that the four parking stalls that are, that are in question north of Kramer's are used many, many times by the people who live in the apartments above those buildings. So, and that's not an ideal situation either, but, so, again, this is a trial basis, it's a 30-day trial, do it and see how it works. And if it doesn't, and if there's a uproar, if there's, this isn't working, we need to do something else, we will either adjust it or we can go back to the way it is now. But until we try something, we give it a shot and open that whole thing up and make it, you know, less congested, because we are getting a lot more traffic in Princeton than we, than we have in the past, and that's only going to continue because, and a lot of it has to do with the commercials we've been airing over the Quad Cities to bring people to town. If you talk to the boutique shop owners in downtown, you'll, you'll find out where all these people that are in Princeton are coming from, and many of them are coming from the western part of the state. And next week we start advertising on W E E K in Peoria, so it's going to, it's going to intensify. In a year or two, we want to do the southwest suburbs. So the congestion on Main Street is, is, you know, it's an issue there, and we just, in my opinion, we need to clean that up and just make it a lot more free-flowing.
Yeah, and you had mentioned the four people that park there all the time. That's why I brought up all the people that park behind the Proudey Building all the time, because it's, it's the same thing. It's, the spots are being filled by the same people that aren't necessarily the spots, that those spots aren't meant for those folks. So, and as far as people finding a place to park, I guess that's, I guess, like I said, I do park down at the movie theater to go get my pizza, but I don't know if, and so I'm not going to not buy a pizza seller, I guess, but it surely would be convenient if I could park a little closer. And I, and, you know, I don't know what we could do to work with the gentleman that owns the property behind, you know, where the house was torn down, but, you know, if we could visit with him to try to get that shaped, that sure would make sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Any other public comment? Just need your name.
My name is Lois Starker. I would like to know from the consul why cannot the city police write a trespassing violation? I'm sorry?
You have a specific instance for your.
Yes, I do. And after he told this person he could not write a trespassing ticket, he walked down, we call her an alley, it's Jones Street, and harassed me, went on the corner of First and Marquette, sat on the sidewalk, sat there taking pictures harassing me, and this and that. Now, I'm wondering how many people in this city knows that the police department in Princeton, Illinois cannot write a trespassing sign when I have it posted?
Are you going to stay for the remainder of the meeting? Because it might, our police chief is sitting here, you might have a conversation with him, because I certainly can't answer the question as if you're.
Well, why don't, why don't the city consul know it? It should be in the minutes.
Yeah, I don't, it hasn't been discussed.
It's just like, I had a city employee come to my residence and tell me where the sewer enters the city sewer and the street, and we have no maps. No, I have no idea. There's a lot of good information being, not, not to the public.
Well, can you, are you going to stay for the remainder of the meeting?
I'll stay a while, otherwise I'll probably end up in jail. And Pete knows that.
I've only heard rumors.
Now, I've been known to speak my piece.
That's fine.
I think.
But if you, yeah, if you stick around and you talk to our chief, and he'll have a better press.
But here's, here's another thing. The day that I tried to call the, the non-important phone calls to the city of Princeton Police Department, I tried for 35 minutes, and I ended up calling Bureau County, and they dispatched an officer out of Bureau County Jail. I was wondering why.
I think a lot of it depends on the number you're calling. If you're calling the Bucom number, that's the non-emergency number, Bucom, you're going to, you're going to get a dispatcher.
I got nobody.
Well, but if you called the phone number for the Princeton Police Department and it was after hours, you wouldn't get it.
No.
Oh, would it go there?
That was three, three o'clock in the afternoon. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you, Lois. Any other public comment? Okay, we'll go to the approval minutes and Commissioner Newman.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm willing that we approve the minutes from our regular council meeting on July 15th, 2019. Second.
Motion's been second. Any corrections, comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mavry.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye.
I'm making a motion that we approve the corrected minutes from our special meeting on May 6th, 2019. Second.
Motion's been second. Any comments or questions?
I'll just make a comment that I took the minutes for that meeting, it had to do with the education of the council on the status of the hospital, and the net novel made the presentation, and I made an interpretive stretch during those minutes that a decision was pending or had been favored over some other, other types of scenarios. And upon review of the oral record, I find that I was in error, so I'm correcting the minutes for the record.
Okay, any comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mavry.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. Now go to approval of invoices and City Clerk Nelson.
Okay, in the Department of Accounts and Finances, we have invoices totaling $33,858.31. In the Department of Streets and Public Improvements, for this period, we have invoices totaling In the Department of Public Safety, we have invoices totaling $110,852.92. And in the Department of Public Property and Utilities, we have invoices totaling Mayor, all council members present have confirmed their reviews of all invoices and now are submitted for disposition.
I'm willing that we approve the invoices as presented. Second.
Motion's been second. Any comments or corrections? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mavry.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. Now go to regular business, the City Clerk Nelson.
Okay, next on the agenda is the second and final reading for ordinance number O-19-015. This is an ordinance amending the parking code. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance and it is submitted for disposition.
I'm willing that we approve ordinance O-19-015. Second.
Motion's been second. Anybody have any comments?
If I could just, Mayor, we've had some good comments brought up about this project, and one of the good things I do see out of this project is by restriping the back parking lot to the diagonal positions, maybe we'll be able to grab a few more spaces. And I have been down there as early as, say, nine o'clock in the morning behind the chamber, and there's already 15 cars there, seven or eight probably from an employer that is back there, and then seven or eight that is there even earlier than that from the high-rise. So there's about 15 that seem to float around, or 12 to 15 on any given morning that are there early. But I think the diagonal parking's a good idea. One of the things that I did look at, we have a comprehensive plan that we paid good money for, and that comprehensive plan talks about our public parking spots and how we're supposed to, as we improve them, we're supposed to be adding green space. So when you meet with Chamblin and design this, the strip thing for this new layout for the parking lot, I hope we keep in mind, I know parking's a premium, but we need to keep in mind a little bit of green space in that parking lot, whether it's just striped in currently or now with the idea that we could add some, maybe some curbing to that area, because otherwise we're, we really aren't setting the example as the city should be by adding green space.
Yeah, and I agree with that, and I think that parking lot is going to be scheduled to be repaved either next year, hopefully it'll be next year and possibly year after. And that's going to be part of the, you know, putting some green space in there. I don't know exactly what, but we've seen what we've done behind the company building, the Osverges Building, you know, something along those lines, so.
Thank you.
My question, just to make sure we're on the same page, this is a three-month trial.
Yeah, it's a three-month trial, and, I mean, we may know before then, I mean, if there's a, if there's something that's not working out much sooner, 30 days or whatever, I mean, we're going to go in and, and we'll hear from the, we'll hear from the public, you know, and we'll be up there and we'll be able to see what's going on. So absolutely, I mean, and people that think that, you know, you say it's going to be a, you know, a trial basis, well, there's never a trial basis. It never happens. It's never a trial basis, you know? That's not true. If there's something that needs to be adjusted or even go back to the way it is now, that is what will occur. But to give it a try is the important thing.
How will we determine whether it's successful or not? Other than the fact, unless, it sounds like if there's some kind of a, several folks that aren't happy about it voice their opinion, that would cause you to maybe relook at it. But other than that, it sounds like that, I don't know how else you're going to figure out whether it's successful or not.
I think for one thing, we'll, we'll know from the police department, we'll know from patrols, we'll know from the public that are driving up and down Main Street, we'll know it. I mean, if there's something that's there that's going to be obvious that it's not working, or we've got complaints on the, on the, you know, towards the intersection, you know, I mean, we will definitely make, we'll hear, we'll make adjustments, we'll do whatever it means, you know, to correct whatever problem might arise, and if it means going back to the way it is now, that's what we'll do. This is just, again, this is trial. We've never done it. And, you know, we do have that bottleneck situation, and we do have that safety thing coming out of the parking lot, let's just, you know, do this, see what it's like and see if it works.
I say, as far as, I've got a couple of things. One is, if it is a bottleneck when people are coming out, why don't change the signage under where nobody can actually come out, only go into that area and come onto the other side, on the east side. Two, exactly how many accidents or incident has been reported over the past, oh, these years, as far as to kind of regulate that it is a safety issue as well. Three, what is it going to be the actual cost of supplies and personnel that are going to be doing this, and then if it doesn't work, then you're going to have to go back and actually restriping anything else. As far as I know, the budget right now is pretty tight, whatever's going on, so that's just kind of a couple of my things. And some of the other things that I have said before is not allowing people to turn south instead of just turning north on that end, rather than just turning south on that area.
And to your last point, I think, I think the street department has an inner budget to miscellaneous items such as this, you know, we're just talking some paint, and we're talking, you know, just, you know, painting over the lines and then putting fresh paint down for, for the yellow and whatnot, so that the expense, I don't think, is that great. Again, I think it's in the street department budget to take care of items like this. The other thing, the second one you mentioned was the, you know, there's one way, there's two ways into that parking lot, and there's two ways out. And one way in is up Main Street, and one way in is up Church Street, and the same goes for how you would exit there. And, I mean, it's just, if you, if you eliminate that, which I'm not saying that's a bad idea, I'm not, I'm not saying that either one way or the other, but you, you eliminate, you only give people one exit, and that's out on Church Street. The other, what was the first one you brought up?
The first one was the actual signage, the other one was the cost, and the third was not allowing people to turn south when they're coming out of that area, which eliminates people trying to just go straight out, and obviously almost get into accidents and that.
Yeah, and I agree with that, you know, I don't think people should come out there and turn left, because that, that just makes it all, all worse. Now, the city is going to be putting up signage, and this is the Bill's comment earlier, we're going to be putting up parking signs. We have our own sign-making machine now, so we're going to be making signs, we're going to identify where all the off-street parking is, you know, but if we can do that as well, I mean, we, that's a good idea, put up a no, no left turn, and I think that's. Was there one other one?
No, just kind of one last thing here. I know I've talked to, you know, several people that have voiced their concerns regarding that if those parkings are, I mean, they're due to the shortages of parking, that they're not even shopping in where those areas are. And this is just something that I heard from some resident residents.
Yeah, and that, that might be the case, but I think by and large, people will find their parking, I mean, it's like Bill, they park out by the Pall Theater and go get a pizza and pizza stuff. A lot of people park on Main Street and they want, they find their parking to get wherever they need to go.
If I could, Mayor, the final comment I have is I would encourage building owners, now, not necessarily the renters that rent the building owner, but the building owners to be proactive, and I was, I was not able to get the two of the building owners that were concerned and were against it to show up at a council meeting. I appreciate, when we started this council meeting tonight, the public comment period, it's nice to hear dialogue, it's nice to see the citizens here with concerns. I just wish the building owners would have been here. So if you're a building owner and were impacting positively or negatively in front of your store, you need to be here and present, and we need to hear from you. So again, I'll be voting no against this tonight. I, I think there's some merit to restriping the back parking lot, and I think that's going to stay no matter what happens. And we'll just try this 90 days and see what happens here, but I'm, I'm still voting no, but thank you for everybody's input.
I'm confused. If you think it's a good idea, why would you vote no?
The, the back parking lot, restriping the back parking lot is a good idea. I don't have any problem with that. I believe restriping that, that needs to be done no matter what happens, and we won't be painting that over if this project fails, I mean, as far as, that's going to stay no matter what.
I think we could also take a step, talking to the employers on Main Street and encourage their employees not to park on Main Street. If they're coming to work, I think it'd be a great event to find parking behind some of the properties that we have and stay off of Main Street. Leave, leave the Main Street parking available for shoppers.
Any further comment? Motion's been second. Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mavry.
No.
Gomez.
Aye.
Newman.
Yes.
Mayor Querom.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is ordinance O-19-016. This is the second and final reading for an ordinance offering the sale of surplus property in the fire department. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance and it is submitted for disposition.
I'm willing that we approve ordinance O-19-016. Second.
Motion's been second. Any comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mavry.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is resolution R-19-029. This is a resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding between Perry Memorial Hospital and OSF Healthcare. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this resolution and it is submitted for disposition.
I'm willing that we approve resolution R-19-029. Second.
Motion's been second. I just want to say before the vote that this is an exciting time for the city and Perry Memorial Hospital, and for everyone who lives in our community and the surrounding area that utilize Perry Memorial Hospital. This resolution, which is a memo of understanding that we are voting on tonight, is between the city of Princeton, Perry Memorial Hospital, and OSF. The memo of understanding officially allows the city and Perry Memorial to have exclusive discussions with OSF in consideration of a variety of partnership options going forward. So, motion has been second. Any comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mavry.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye, and I do have a brief statement regarding this as well. This is a very important, you know, project that we're undertaking, and the city of Princeton recognizes that healthcare is transforming with significant advances in technology beyond anything that we've seen in the past. And the cost of technology, while beneficial in the long run, is expensive and is changing all the time. The ability to participate in all this technological advancement and innovation is an important point of disconsideration for our conversations with OSF as we move forward. We believe we are being proactive and looking at the future now rather than having to react to the unexpected later on. Road hospitals are challenged not only by the advancement of technology and innovation, but also by legislative action that could curtail our providing of medical care we've all wanted in our community. We also recognize that certain components of healthcare come with a personal touch, and we are determined to deliver that aspect of care also to our community for decades to come. That's all I have. Motion's been second. We are voting, yeah, thank you. Okay, so we have City Manager report.
So I have the June 2019 monthly financial report. This is two months into our fiscal year, so the average revenue and expenditures are about 18 percent, a little higher in some funds, and that's largely due to principal and interest payments on some bonds that were due in June. The sales tax report for June 2019 was down just slightly over the prior year, and same for hotel and lotto tax. The ending cash and investments for the end of June was 5.8 million, and the debt repayment for all of the city's debt is at 18 million at the end of June. And then the police and fire report, we have Bucom had total calls of 5,400. The fire department responded to 165 calls, this is for the month of June, and the police department responded to 620 calls for the month of June. Are there any questions on that report or the fire police pension report that were also in the packet?
No questions? Okay, so, under Mayor Report, tonight's the first meeting we're going to have where we are all going to report on the status of the committees that we all individually sit on. We're not members of these committees, but we, we do go to these committee meetings in city and, and so every other month, we're just going to have, everybody's going to just give a very brief report. This isn't anything that needs to be long drawn out, just a brief report of what's going on, and I can start. And so what I do is I, I attend the street concert, committee meetings. We hold those once a month. We've got one coming up this Thursday. We've been a little challenged this year with our first street concerts because of the weather, because it's not been raining, it's been, you know, extreme heat, as we had experienced in our last one. We are in the middle of a fundraising campaign for the purchase of new stage that we will middle of a fundraising campaign for the purchase of new stage that we will be able to use, and that we'll also be able to rent out when we're not using it for street concerts. Right now, we're currently sitting at about $6,000 on this, and we're, we have a GoFundMe page on our Princeton tourism site for this as well. So we are continuing to, to raise funds for this. And next year, I'm thinking that Princeton Tourism on our side will be able to contribute something to the, to the street concert for the purchase of a stage as well. We're working, we will be looking at hiring or booking bands for next year. We're looking to do that this year, and we'll be doing that as soon as after our last street concert in September. So things are moving forward. We've had good crowds despite the weather, and the forecast for this next one on August 16th looks to be really good, so I'm hoping for sunny weather and eighty-degree weather. So, so that's it for the street concert.
What's the goal? How much money do they need for the stage?
Well, we've looked at new stages and we've looked at used stages. We're going to be looking at used stages, because new stages are extremely expensive. We're talking thirty-five, forty thousand dollars for something as simple as what we want. So we're going to be looking for used stages, so we're, used. So our target goal right now, I think, is fifteen thousand dollars.
I sit in on the Historic Preservation Commission, and currently, they're working on some design options for building marker plaques. And that would be for the buildings within the historic district. And they would also be a plaque that would be for sale to the owners. They're just trying to come up with a design that might be more the same for everybody if they were wanting to have one. And those plaques would actually, like, possibly discuss what the building initially was the year it was built, just some facts like that. They're also discussing a possible design improvement grant for Main Street buildings and ways to create funding. And they also discussed future brick street repair plans and just different plans in areas throughout town where maybe there's a dip in something smaller they can fix to get some more life out of it and bring more of public awareness to it. And they also are talking about different ideas for some signage for our north and south historic districts from off of eighty coming into Princeton.
Ray, do you know if some of these plaques can be sourced locally?
I, I believe they're trying to work with A&amp;M for a couple of design options, and they were thinking maybe like two different sizes.
Great.
Okay, well, the committee that I sit in and listen to, and I really enjoy this, is the Princeton Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission. Their motto is, "They keep things moving." And this is a pretty active group. They met in June, and they discussed the grants that they've got going. They're working on some grants, including a grant for a possible bicycle path out towards the Red Copper Bridge. They also are working on a walkability study. They're doing that this summer. And they spent all of July, well, actually, they did a lot of pre-work on this, but a lot of the committee members are actively involved with the Z Tour, so they did not meet in July because they were so heavily involved with the Z Tour, which was, obviously, a tremendous success and continued success. So, good group. I enjoyed being a part of them. I'm probably the least active as far as exercising. I'm going to get going on that whole thing. So, anyway, good group. So I appreciate being on that.
I had been sitting with the arts commission, the committee, and I ended up missing this last meeting because I had other engagements that I had to do. But the last one I did me, within one of the biggest things that they were talking about was fundraising efforts as far as how to increase the fundraising to be able to do in the mosaic down Main Street over here, and to be able to go ahead and do other art projects. But also, they were talking about the heating, the pathways, the brickwork, and any of the electrical work that was going on as far as repairing it to see if it was really working. They were talking about the bike rack. It was, Cindy had submitted a grant for it to try to get that money in. And they keep discussing as far as other things, as far as even members to be able to go ahead and participate with the, with the art commission, to be able to go ahead and continue to work on different arts, not only the mosaic that they're working on right now. But, and they do hope to have that at least displayed hopefully soon.
The first committee report I want to give you is for the library. I attended these three commissions in June. I was out of town for the meetings in July, but let me tell you what I have. For the library, just wanted to share with the community that the new air conditioning systems that were donated to the library are fully installed and been inspected and are working well, and much improvement for coolness and comfort of the people that go to the library. The computer area in the library has been changed, and they've replaced all the carpeting with a hard surface floor. It's much more functional and will last a lot longer than the original carpeting that was down before. And they think this is a big improvement for that area. The cafe continues to do better and better each and every one. They provide a quality product, and more and more people are spending time over there in the morning and in the afternoon. They also offer corporate sponsorships, and Bill, you may want to, I don't know, maybe you've been approached by this, but others as well, is where a company here in town can pay a fee for a one-month sponsorship. You can bring literature and advertising paraphernalia from your business and place it in the library and have access to the library patrons for that month as in return for whatever donation you make to the campaign. It's a good idea. It helps them offset some of the costs for the library. Didn't mean a big idea, though. They hired an assistant librarian in June, which is a good thing. And they are also upgrading the recognition wall for all the generous donors in the library. So that's also good. The Lovejoy Homestead meetings and reports are as follows. The sidewalk replacement project will start soon with the help of Quentin, the guys from the street department. They're going to be using the bricks from the Uco Street project to replace the brick cobblestone sidewalk that is currently in place on the property. It is, it is in bad disrepair and needs to be thoroughly removed and put back together again properly. The Lovejoy Homestead trustees have hired a landscape company to do the labor, and they're grateful to the city for providing the bricks to make it happen. They also have bids out to repaint the building. They hope to have that done before winter sets in. They are also looking for new docents, new guides for the people that are coming in to visit this facility. The visitors are increasing more and more this year than in years past, so they are looking for people that are interested in history and interested in talking to some people that come in and share what we know about this unique facility. This is, by the way, a part-time paid position. It's paid by the city. The final report is for the hospital, and other than this monumental decision that we made tonight to move forward with the memorandum of understanding, that is by far the biggest and most important issue we've got going. But other things that I think are interesting is that in June, I was able to tour the new cardiac rehab center with the hospital board. It's fantastic. They've got a great staff there, and they're working with all the patients that have a need to come in there and get their exercise programs in place and attain full recovery. The hospital is also providing interpreter services for foreign-speaking patients. This, I think, is kind of, this is a great idea. I'm sure from time to time, they encounter people that come in here, they're having difficulty communicating with us, and this service helps solve that problem. And that's all I've got.
Thank you, everyone. I think this is very worthwhile that we report on these. I have no idea. We'll do it every other month, first meeting. Before we go on to the three-way stop sign, I wanted to ask Bob on that Fletcher zering. There's no stop signs there now, is there?
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay. So, something that came up during the discussion of what we're doing on South Main Street is this three-way, this intersection at Park Avenue West where it meets Main Street, and the problems that people have there in getting out on the Main Street coming from the stop sign. You know, this is another situation where you have diagonal parking to the left, and there's some big vehicles that use up those spaces, and we have three lanes, a right turn, a straight, and I think a left turn, and it makes it difficult for people to see who's coming from the north going south. So one of the, you know, this is, it's not the only idea, but one idea is maybe talking about making that a three-way stop sign, or anybody else has any other ideas? I just wanted to throw it out there and get everybody's idea.
I know myself that I've been going south on Main Street, and someone to my right who is trying to move forward thinks that I'm going to stop, and I don't. So they proceed, and all of a sudden, we're both hitting our brakes and trying to. So it does seem to be a problem, and maybe trying to find a solution is a good thing.
I think we seem to all be in favor of this, but hopefully, we don't have to do an ordinance to try this, right? Or do we do? This ordinance thing kills us, because it, I mean, it's costly to prepare things like that time-wise. We can't just try this for thirty days without an ordinance.
Well, it's a deviation from the, from the, from the current method. I would kind of think you need some sort of authorization to do so.
So every time we add a stop sign?
The code says stop signs have to be by ordinance.
Every stop sign, we add a stop sign anywhere in Princeton, we have to...
If you look at the code, there's, there's a list of every street that has a stop sign of where it is. Now it's created by ordinance.
Very good.
You know, there's different, you know, one of the things that, that, you know, we are getting new stop signs for the intersection just north of there, at the other corner, on the other side of the courthouse. And I think they're going to be taller, and they're going to be flashing red, because those stop signs are really difficult. So they'll be tall and be flashing red. We're trying to do the same thing at the other intersection. And, or either that, or maybe suspend the red flashing light over the intersection like we do out on Euclid and Backbone Road. I don't know. But, so we'll have it, we'll have a first reading in our next meeting. Unless anybody has any other ideas on that. I mean, I...
I think it's worth trying, unless, you know, there's a better idea out there. But we all agree that it, things like that happen.
And we have two weeks. So if anybody comes up with another idea, anytime within that two-week period, you know, let Rachel know, so we can give us some consideration. So that's it on that. Any further question, or comments? Okay. And Ray, I've mentioned the Z Tour, and I just wanted to, you know, once again, you know, we had ninety-five-degree heat, we had over seven hundred riders, seventy of them, I think, rode a hundred miles, which is just amazing to me. So, great turnout. So, congratulations to everyone associated with Z Tour. Thank you, everybody, for participating. Any more business? Any new business?
If I could, Mayor, one issue I'd like to discuss and bring up with the idea that we can hopefully be discussing further. As we all know, as residents in Illinois, recreational marijuana is going to be legal effective January first, 2020. The question I have is, as a community, how we're going to respond to this, and are we going to, I know, when I read the paper, there's other communities that have already put into place some restrictions on this, whether they have decided as a community not to allow sales within the city limits. I know Pete told me, you've already had inquiries about that vendors wanting to sell recreational marijuana. So I think we're going to have to have a discussion about this, the sooner the better on that, and learn from what these other communities are already doing into play. And we need to rely on our police team to give us some guidance on this, too. So we're going into uncharted territories, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, and I think because this law goes in effect January first, and whoever wants to have a dispensary is going to be, is going to want to be on the running, you know, soon thereafter. I think we need to be doing our due diligence and educating ourselves and using the police department as far as, as a resource. And maybe we can put this on the agenda for the, possibly for the next meeting for a full-fledged discussion.
I'll just mention that we have been collecting data from our familiar Holland Trades and Peoria, who are one of our attorney teams, as well as from the IML, you know, Illinois Municipal League. They're all, they're all starting to dispense all kinds of guidance. So we'll kind of package that up and make sure everybody gets that.
Yeah, I did read an article on the IML website about this, and they do have a couple of articles, and it's, it's got some really good information. So...
Does the state mandate that anyone who's selling recreational marijuana needs a license from the community? So they will be licensed, and we can dictate how many licenses we will have?
Yeah, we can limit, we can, you know, reject, you know, everything's open, I think, on that. Any other new business? Any public comment?
I just want to mention National Night Out is tomorrow night.
Thank you. I actually have that. So, yeah, National Night Out is tomorrow night at Darius Miller Park. I think it starts Soldiers and Sailors, sorry, Soldiers and Sailors. I didn't even point in the right direction, Soldiers and Sailors. There's also a blood drive associated with that. The blood drive starts at, is it five?
Between four-thirty and five. It's all set up down there.
And the National Night Out, those hours are?
From four-thirty until eight.
Yeah, okay. So there'll be, you know, fire equipment, police equipment, there'll be canine officers out there with their dogs, there'll be hot dogs and water, and all sorts of good things for the kids. So, yeah, make sure to get out.
And just something is like the hot dogs and some of the food are going to be provided by Sepasa, which is the community pharmacy, so is abuse, and they'll be out there as well.
Any other public comment? Just need your hand.
Thanks. I just got a text message. Sorry, the lady that wanted to be here tonight, she's in labor. So she does apologize, because she knows that what I'm going to say is going against, because she thinks it's going to hurt. But talking about roads and everything, she would like to know if there could be a crosswalk between Ace Hardware and Pizza Hut, because there is absolutely no crosswalk there. She said, when she goes there, because she likes to park, and she likes to walk, and she wanted to go on labor, you know, five days earlier, because she didn't want to be late on her delivery date. But now she's, you know, so of course, she wants to walk it off. But anyways, make a long story, really short. She said that if you guys could please think about a crosswalk there.
That's, that's a state route, so that's going to be up to the state on whether or not a crosswalk can go there. But we can certainly contact them, let them know there's been a request, and then they'll, they'll let us know. It's their decision. We wouldn't have anything, we really wouldn't have anything to...
To offer. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene at our next. And will we adjourn our regular meeting this evening and reconvene our city council meeting for next Monday, August 19th, 2019, at seven o'clock at City Hall?
Second.
Motion's been second. Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson?
Aye.
Mavry?
Aye.
Gomez?
Aye.
Newman?
Aye.
Mayor Quirrell?
Aye. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.